If I had a gavel, I'd knock it. Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of board members is present, and if you would, please say here as I call your name. Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Lea Beth Apt.
Here.
The Reverend James Irvin.
Here.
Dr. Tyrell Gromon.
Here.
And Farshid Nairamond.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow was or is unable to attend the meeting tonight. We thank you for joining us tonight. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of the Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adopted procedures to the extent practical, and audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. The Zoom software does allow for people to view and interact. We want to apologize in advance for any unforeseeable technical difficulties we may experience during the meeting and ask for your patience as we navigate that. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:04 PM. Board, everybody have your codes for executive?
Yes.
All right. We'll see in a few minutes. The board is now reconvening into open session at 6:07 PM. And tonight, I will ask Reverend Irvin to give us our invocation, sir.
Shall we pray? Father, we're so thankful for blessings, even for technology, though we can't gather in one place, we yet can connect. And tonight, we ask that through your divine power that you would cover not only our faculty and staff, but cover our students in this season of pandemic. Then we pray, oh God, that you would give strength to our teachers, give them the patience, the endurance, help them to hold out in these trying times. We thank you for this district. I pray for the board that we can do all that we can to make it better. Guide us tonight in your son Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate those words. All right, next item 3B, we have announcements from our superintendent, Dr. Trujillo.
Well, thank you, President Finch and board. Just want to make sure to share a little bit of news with you all. First and foremost, I want to make sure that we recognize the tremendous efforts. I heard it in Reverend's prayer, and recognize our teachers. Celebrate our teachers for the tremendous work that they're doing each and every day. We see you, we see you, we see you, and we know the work that you're doing is precious and we know is exhausting. So I just want to make sure to first start off with that, to let you know we appreciate you, each and every one of our educators, our teachers, and staff that are with our precious little ones each and every day. But we've got some exciting news as well that I want to share. Nacogdoches ISD's Fine Arts Program has earned its second award this year. The district was notified last month. It was named the 2019-2020 Texas Arts and Education Arts Association District of Distinction. Exciting, exciting news. In March, shortly after the school closure in Texas because of COVID-19 pandemic, NISD was recognized as a National Association of Music Merchants and 2020 Best Community for Music Education. In fact, we were prepared to recognize the music award at our March board meeting, but then everything changed because of, you know it, the pandemic. I'm so proud of our art students and the teachers as well as our music program. This is an outstanding achievement for our district, and they all deserve to be honored for their work. Congratulations to Paulette Tomlinson, NISD's Director of Fine Arts, for the job she's doing as well as the fine arts classes around the district. To see the celebration at the high school, we know it's the little ones all the way up through and their arrival through the high school program. This award brings recognition to NISD's remarkable fine art students as well as their hard-working, passionate teachers that we have. So congratulations to them. Also, President Finch, I want to bring this up. This is amazing. Nacogdoches High School senior Stuart Bell and LeAnn Moore achieved commended status for outstanding academic performance in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. Now, listen to this very carefully. This is amazing. More than 1.5 million students throughout the United States entered this competition by taking the 2019 Preliminary ASAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And Bill and Moore were two out of the 34,000 students across the nation that received this honor. So congratulations to Stuart and LeAnn for this accomplishment. Great news to share out, and I will tell you, that's not done briefly. It's those parents that have been supporting them at home, and also those teachers, everyone of the teachers that touched those lives of those kids. And we have heroes just like this across our wonderful school district. So wanted to give that as a little bit of news to share. Thank you, President Finch.
Thank you, Dr. Trujillo. My only regret, and I know the board would share this, is that we aren't unable to give them a standing ovation. It is well-deserved.
We can still do that.
And make us proud. That's true. There you go.
I'm going to give them a Zoom ovation. There it is, right there. My Zoom ovation.
I like it. Making our district proud. So thankful for you guys. All right, now we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. Those wishing to address the board during public comment emailed a request to the district administrators today before 4:00 PM. If you're interested in speaking at a future meeting for public comment, please follow the directions on the meeting agenda announcement. We have one request today to speak. The time limit will be three minutes, and we are hearing tonight from Michelle Peck, and she is speaking to us on absolute technology and the CIPA compliance safety report. Ms. Peck, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here tonight, and you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, President Finch, board, and superintendent Trujillo. I knew the district was starting this fall with new technology, no consistent online curriculum plan, and that teachers wouldn't even be linking with the types of laptops needed. But I believe in public schools, so I chose NACISD to provide remote learning for my kids. It's 2020, and we are all in this together. Now that report cards are being printed and all of our decisions are etched into the permanent records of students who count on us to do what's right, I wonder if you've had the opportunity to revisit some of the new efforts in place to see if things are operating as expected. For example, we added learning time to student schedules so we could meet state instructional minutes requirements and not extend our school year. These minutes were quickly absorbed by the need to provide health and wellness checks, but students and teachers have reported this just isn't happening on many campuses. I know you're discussing investing in tech to help with wellness checks. Is it because the procedures you were told would be in place aren't being followed? COVID-19 reports were being broadly distributed via social media, campus messaging systems, and on delay through the district website, but these reports only tell part of the story. While we're lauding principles for standing in to teach classes, we're failing to acknowledge the fact that many staff members are home in quarantine. Schools are required to report self-reported positive cases. Are you getting a report of campus quarantine totals? I could see this reporting mirroring the reporting you get for class-size waivers. What is the average student-to-teacher ratio on our campuses? When you voted on remote learning programs, you were told the district had a goal of not expecting teachers to manage both online and face-to-face learning, what Dr. Hill called double duty. In the eighteen periods my two kids have, every single teacher is doing double duty. I noticed one class had more than 40 students. Where was that goal met across the district? Trustee Apt mentioned on Tuesday that the programs in which we're investing aren't necessarily working as sold. For example, Canvas wasn't talking to Home Access Center, so you're exploring additional tech consulting to tie these programs together. This created a huge issue for one of my kids who learned two classes were being failed from the progress report. This was troubling because in Home Access Center, I have an alert that lets me know if my child scored 70 or below on any assignment. This didn't operate. When I got the report card, it details the grades from May of last year, not this semester, and I'm still missing any alert for nine unexcused absences that apparently my child has had. These programs not talking to each other are hurting our ability to help teachers help our students. I had a counselor ask me to provide proof documenting other failures in Canvas, which I did, because these communication issues are not unique to my kids. One mom told me today that she wanted to speak against remote learning, but she was afraid to lose the option. So please know, these observations are from my experience, but I'm guessing they can be magnified through others. I raise these concerns because you can't fix a problem unless you identify it, and I want us all to succeed together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peck. Right, that takes us now to our consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there's a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter, and it will be set aside for further discussion in a separate vote. Do I hear a motion?
Ms. Finch, James Irvin, I would like to make a motion that we would approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Reverend Irvin. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
A second by Mr. Nairamond? Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. That moves us to item six, the Discussion Action Agenda. 6A, Consideration of a Contract with Absolute Technology Solutions. Do I hear a motion?
Madam President, I move that the NISD Board of Trustees approve Support Services Contract with Absolute Technology Solution Support Services Contract, total budget impacting $113,000 and not exceed $180,000.
Thank you, Mr. Nairamond. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I'm going to put Ms. Apt as the second. I heard her voice. Any discussion about this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is item 6B, Consideration of Purchase of Smart Tag System. Do we have a motion on this item?
Madam President, I go ahead and make a motion again. I move that Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees approve the purchase of smart tag system for the amount of $104,366.50.
Thank you, Mr. Nairamond. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Montoya for the second? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, 6C, Consideration of Nomination of Candidate for TASBE Board of Directors, and that nomination would be for Dr. Gromon. Do we hear a motion?
Ms. Finch, I would like to, James Irvin?
Yes, sir.
That Dr. Gromon would be the representative from the Nacogdoches School District for the TASBE Board.
Thank you, Reverend Irvin. Do we hear a second? I couldn't quite pick that up. I think, who was that?
Nairamond.
Thank you, Mr. Nairamond. It was breaking up on me just a little bit. So second by Mr. Nairamond? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much. So that's going to take us to item seven on our report, on our agenda, sorry. It is reports. It is item A, Bilingual Program Annual Evaluation Report, from Mrs. Evelyn Sauceda. Ms. Sauceda, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Or I can.
Well, good afternoon, President Finch, board members, and President Dr. Trujillo. I have a short bilingual ESL program, so I'm going to share my screen with you. Can you hear my presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, so this is the bilingual ESL program evaluation report that we have to do annually. And I have five points that I have to discuss based on the Texas Education Code. The first one that I have to share with you, it is the academic progress for English learners that is usually measured by the STAR test. However, due to the pandemic and the school closure, we were not able to actually administer the STAR test for any of our students. And for that reason, we don't have any data that we can present as far as the progress for our students. The second point is the extent to which English learners are becoming proficient in English, and that is scored by the TELPASS test, which is the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System. And once again, due to COVID-19 and school closures, only few students were able to actually complete the four sections of the test and actually have a complete score, but I'm going to present those to you. The third item is the number of students who have been exited from the bilingual education program or reclassified. The fourth point is the professional development approaches and strategies that's for second language acquisition. And the five is the bilingual exception or ESL waiver in the current year. So right now, we have, up to today, we have about 1,759 English learner students in the district. We have 275 monitors, which these are students that have exited the program, but we still have to monitor their progress for five consecutive years. We have five migrant students, and these are students from migratory agricultural workers or any other parent that are actually traveling in the States to work, and we have to take a very close look at their progress as well. We also have 37 immigrant students, and these are students that have been in the country for less than three years. Those are our newcomers that were not born in the United States. We also have, right now, 102 students who actually met the criteria for exiting or reclassifying, which means that these students not only have actually reached their academic performance levels that we expected as any English native, but also have actually met the English proficiency criteria that we want. We'll also have another possible 119 students, but we're pending language proficiency scores, and so we hope to have a higher number this year. This table looks a little busy, but I just wanted to show you and compare the numbers from 2019 and 2020. And one of our goals is to, every year, to really take a close look about the progress of our students and how much they're actually acquiring English. The Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System, which is the TELPASS, actually look at four areas, the listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and we want to make sure that all students are making progress. Every time our students take this test, they have like an overall score, and we want to make sure that all of our students are making a progress every year, just as, yes, for example, the way that we do it in STAR test. So if we just look at this table, we want to make sure that every student, no matter where they are, that they improve a level every, every year. And so we have a really good system where we can actually, and we can look at by student, by campus, by grade level. So we are constantly seeking and looking for different approaches and collaborating with teachers and administrators to see ways on how we can improve our English proficiency with our students. If you can see, this year, and I highlighted on yellow, 1,011 students were not able to complete the TELPASS test, and the reason is that in March after the spring break is when we actually have to complete all those assessments, so we were not able to complete those. Now, what are we doing to support students? Definitely, we have a, we're working on, in our systems in place to provide this progress monitoring and to the teachers and the students. We have some linguists intervention supports where we want to do a systematic approach for a targeted and focused language development process in all subject areas from pre-k all the way to high school. But we understand that the progress of the student kind of starts with the teacher, so we really focus on providing those supports to the teacher. And so we have learning strategies and resources that focus on TELPASS, helps shelter instruction strategies, ESL preparation, certification, and guidance. We also work very closely with SFA, with the Bilingual Education Student Organization, to identify any students who are Spanish speakers that are currently in the teaching program, so we can kind of grow our own. We also are working with, with some efforts with SFA to actually, I'm sorry, yes, to bring, collaborate with them to actually provide literacy support throughout the year. We're trying to plan to hopefully start after November and actually have the program in the spring, where our teachers and our SFA students, soon to be teachers, can actually have that experience to work without students. And the last thing that we're working on is that we're collaborating with SFA for a grant of $250,000 that will be used to support our teachers to provide shelter instruction, ESL strategies, and to have like three weeks of professional development paid for this educators. So we're trying to collaborate with our local resources as much as we can and with the community, because I know that we have a high need. And the last thing that I have to present to you is the bilingual education exception and ESL waiver. Right now, we have, we are expected to have a bilingual exception for two teachers. What do you see right now in this table? It is our elementary campuses that have bilingual instruction. The dark blue squares represent the bilingual classrooms. The light blue squares represent the two teachers that will need a bilingual exception. That means that the teachers are, some of them, they are actually certified, but they need to pass their bilingual certification, but they actually met the criteria because they are Spanish speakers. And we are not expecting to have an ESL waiver at this point. And that concludes my presentation. Muchas gracias. If you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we can go back to the TELPASS language progress and monitoring?
Yes.
That 1,011 students we lost because of the COVID, right? Not being able to assess them? Is that what I understood?
Sorry. No, we did not lose the students. It's just that we weren't able to submit their scores. Some of them actually had partial scores. They actually took like the reading test online or the speaking test, but they have to actually submit like five writing samples to TEA. So, and like I said, that is a whole process. So it is not that we lose students, it's just that we, after the spring break, is when our teachers actually were really hard to actually get the students to complete the five samples, for example, and just because the student didn't come back, so it was, it was going to be extremely difficult to ask our teachers and our students to come back and administer the test. Luckily, TEA was able to, even though they didn't waive the test, but they didn't, they gave us the option. They said, try to see if you can administer the test, but if you cannot, there's no, it was no penalty for us not to do it. The only thing is that we don't have those scores. We still have those students, and we have, like I said, partial tests, but we were not able to get 100% of the scores just because the scores were not, I mean, the tests were not completed. Like I said, the test has four sections, the reading, the writing, the speaking, and the listening.
It has to be administered person to person, right? It can't be done on the computer?
Well, the writing, like I said, are writing samples, so the students have to do like big, like depending on the grade level, so the writing samples cannot be administering one day. We would have to schedule like five different consecutive days, and they can be done in a group, but it will realize, I mean, it will be pretty much every teacher in every, in every campus, because we do have EL students or English learners in every classroom. So, and all of them, they have to take a test. The reading component is done in the computer, so I believe most of our students were able to take that test in the computer prior to the pandemic, but we cannot, TEA do not score just the reading component by itself, so we have to have all four.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question. Can we go back to the lovely color-coded graph of the, I love color code. Yeah, you may have explained this, but I didn't catch it. What are the, like, Nettie Marshall has two lines, TJR two lines, Brooks Quinjon three. What are the lines for?
Well, that is every classroom. So for example, Nettie Marshall has two dual-language kindergarten classes, two first grade, two second.
Oh, so that's just for their, that's the classes. Okay. That's how many classes have that? Okay. Also, and also, I just, I just wanted to put this, I want to promote you here, and because a lot of our listeners, when they see bilingual or especially English and second language classes and teachers and stuff, we have a tendency to think of Spanish, and certainly that is our largest group. But I remember a year, a couple of years ago, we were serving like 18 different languages. Do you know how many languages we have in our district by any chance?
Yes, actually, we have like 125 different languages.
That are spoken at home. Yes, yes, thank you. And I did, I did check to see what we were currently doing at the high school, and we're doing, board members, we're doing not just Spanish, but we're doing Somali, Vietnamese, Arabic, and Albanian. And I just want to applaud these teachers that are doing this with our students, and I also want to say to the community, I don't know any other districts around here that are serving this many people. I think we, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Gracias. Ya gan do, doctora.
Gracias, llegando, doctora Sauceda. Bien hecho. Y gracias por enseñar a los dragones bilingüe. Muy, muy bien.
I might add, Dr. Finch, President Finch and Board, Dr. Sauceda, on this graph that you're showing right now, what's exciting is the grant and the partnership you have with SFA. If this is a university that pumps out teachers, then we need to do our very best to find those teachers so they can partner up with the amazing teachers we have here in Nakadoches. And those light blue fields right there, we will be able to find some top-notch teachers, right, Dr. Sauceda?
Yes, doctor.
We have the, we have the advantage because Dr. Sauceda just got her doctorate from SFA. So she is knowledgeable and has a lot of connections at SFA. So I think she can bring some teachers for us.
Yes, we're stealing them from the other districts, so yeah.
Oh, good. I like to hear that. One more thing, you kept mentioning how you're looking at, you and everyone are looking at what's being very successful and what isn't. And especially because we don't have data from tests from this last year, but you can go back and see what was the problem. And I know you're addressing it. I would love for you to come back and report to us later on, whenever y'all have come to some, you know, conclusion of what is successful and what isn't and what we're doing there. I'd love to hear that.
Yeah, I surely will.
Any other questions for Mrs., I'm sorry, Dr. Sauceda? All right.
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is Item Eight. The Board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and is allowed by Texas Government Code, Section 551.0821. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the Board reconvenes in open session. It is now 6:36 PM. Uh, yes, Reverend, was that Reverend Irvin?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Proud to going to executive session. If I may, I would like to extend on behalf of the Board and Nakadoches Independent School District our condolences to Miss Samantha Stutt family, who was a lifelong educator.
Yes.
That school, and just like to send our condolences out to our family.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
I'm sorry.
Right. All right, so Board, we're going to meet back in executive session. We'll use the executive session number one. And we'll, for the public who is tuning in and viewing, we will not reconvene before 7:00 PM.
Hey, Les. Mr. Montoya's getting good at that.
Yeah, well, I'm learning from my granddaughter.
And you know what, Mr. Montoya? Les has nothing but faith because he didn't even budge.
That's right. I'm not worried about him.
Ms. Finch, I believe everyone's in.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Weinberger.
I don't see the Reverend.
He, he was on there. Yeah, he's on here.
Okay.
Come here.
All right. Now, call the Board back into open session for reconvening. It is 7:09 PM. The next item on our agenda, Item Nine A. The matter has been resolved and the grievance has been withdrawn. So that will take us to Item 10, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll play Mindy this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Reverend. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all truly for your time tonight. We appreciate, we appreciate it.
Well done. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.